Good evening, everyone. Can everybody hear me? I see a lot of thumbs up. Great. Okay, welcome to the March 22, 2021 Regular City Council Meeting. And I'd like to ask our city clerk clerk to please call the roll.
Counselor Long Curtis.
Present.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Sit.
Counselor Runyon.
Present.
Counselor Randall.
Present.
Counselor Richardson.
Present.
Mayor Mays.
Present. Okay, at this time, item three on the agenda is Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to ask Counselor Scott Randall to please lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item four on the agenda is Approval of the Agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda? With, there is one amendment, which is the addition of a proclamation.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move to approve the agenda with the addition of the proclamation.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, Counsel Randall.
Are we talking about the proclamation of Sexual Assault Action Month?
Yeah, we're just talking about adding it to the agenda and we'll get to discussion about it after the, after item four.
Okay, thank you. I second the motion.
It's been moved by Counselor Long Curtis and seconded by Counsel Randall to approve the agenda as amended. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I see unanimous approval. Great. Thank you very much. City Clerk Grossman is, is item five the proclamation or is it the audience participation?
Audience participation.
Okay. Item five is audience participation and item-
Sorry, Mayor. No, we added presentations that wasn't on the agenda before, so the presentation is first.
You mean the proclamation?
Yeah, presentation proclamation, yes, sir.
Okay, we'll go to the proclamation. At this point, I'd like to turn it over to Counsel Randall.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I read over this proclamation and I, of course, I support it. However, I do have some objections to some of the languages included in this proclamation. Particularly in paragraph four where it says whereas, there's a phrase there that says by challenging a culture of systemic oppression. And again, in paragraph six, it says systemic oppression, the root cause of all forms of violence and abuse. And I think those are partisan and I don't think they actually belong in the proclamation. I think they detract from a statement. I think if we remove those statements or those phrases, the body of the text remains the same and it still has the message, so. I would ask that those particular phrases be removed before we make the proclamation.
Okay, to be clear, you're suggesting that we omit in the fourth whereas clause, we omit the phrase by challenging a culture of systemic oppression. And in the sixth whereas clause, you're suggesting we eliminate the phrase systemic oppression, comma, the root cause.
Yes. If we remove those two phrases, then I'm okay. I think by leaving those phrases in there, it invites a lot of question about where we side on this particular national debate that's going on right now. And I think it attracts from the business of the city.
Okay, at this point, I would entertain a second to, well, are you making a motion to pass the proclamation as amended?
I would make a motion to pass the amendment as written with the omission of the following words in paragraph four where it says by challenging a culture of systemic oppression. And in chapter six, by removing the words systemic oppression, the root cause of. And by removing those two phrases, it makes it, kind of neutralizes the proclamation and, but retains the body of the statement, the spirit of the statement, I guess.
Okay, to be clear, you're making a motion, we pass the proclamation as amended, taking out those two phrases.
Correct.
Okay, is there a second to Counsel Randall's motion?
Counsel Runyon, I'll second that.
Okay, is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I have some discussion.
Yes, Counsel Long Curtis.
Yes, so I hear what Counsel Randall is saying and obviously Counsel Runyon also agrees with that. Just another point of view, though, from a woman's perspective. Rape is really about, and sexual violence is about control, and I think what we're talking about is systemic oppression of women that makes it okay. We always have trainings on how women can avoid being raped, how they can change how they dress, how they can change how they act, but we don't have classes on how men should not rape. And I think that's really what the point of the proclamation is, trying to bring more awareness of that culture, not of something else that was alluded to here. So just from a female's point of view, I think that is the point of that.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Okay. If this does not get three votes, I'll be entertaining another motion from anyone else on the floor. But let's see how this goes first. Last call for any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the proclamation as amended, as suggested by Counsel Randall, please say aye or raise your hand.
Aye. I support that amendment, yes.
That's three. Okay, opposed? Okay, I get three to one. With one abstention, I suppose. Counsel Richardson?
Sorry, Mr. Mayor. I just saw Counselor Randall's comments a few moments before the meeting opened, and I just don't feel like I've had, you know, availed myself of enough time to really think this through and come out with any sort of coherent position, so I'm gonna abstain at this point.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Richardson. Okay, so let the record show that the vote is three to one to pass the proclamation as amended with one abstention. So moving on to audience participation. At this point, well, let me read this first. During this portion of the meeting, anyone may speak on any subject which does not later appear on the agenda. Five minutes per person will be allowed if a response by the city is requested. The speaker will be referred to the city manager for further action. The issue may appear on a future meeting agenda for city council consideration. Now, I have asked Kenny LaPointe, who's the Executive Director of Mid-Columbia Community Action, to appear before the city council tonight. And I asked him to do that after this agenda was printed up. And for that reason, I'd like to call on Mr. LaPointe at this point to address the issue of the pallet shelters and where we stand with that. He has some remarks that are in writing that have been provided to the city council in advance. And I will allow Mr. LaPointe to go beyond the five minutes if that is necessary. He is a partner of the cities in working on the unhoused or homeless issue. So with that-
Excuse me, Mayor?
Yes.
You didn't read the proclamation nor acknowledge Haven, who I believe is here to accept that?
Okay, hang on a second.
Yeah, we have a short speech, if there's time for us to do that.
Oh, I'm sorry. I should have called you before. Who's speaking, please? I didn't catch that.
My name's Cassandra Chenoweth. I work for Haven.
Okay, Ms. Chenoweth, go ahead and speak, please. And I apologize for overlooking your wanting to participate in the discussion. Let me read the, can I, do you want me to read the proclamation first or would you like to talk, would you like to speak first or does it matter?
May I speak first?
Sure, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Rich Mays and the entire city council for acknowledging the importance of Sexual Assault Action Month and for allowing us to briefly speak about the prevalence of this issue. My name is Cassie. I am an empowerment project facilitator and I use she/her pronouns.
My name is Lucy and I am a bilingual sexual violence advocate. We represent the empowerment project and the sexual violence team at Haven from domestic and sexual violence in the Dalles. Haven programming promotes initiatives such as Sexual Assault Action Month that are meant to address violence in our communities with the hope that one day we will have prevented violence from ever happening in the first place. In the next few minutes, we intend to speak to the importance of recognizing April as Sexual Assault Action Month here in Wasco County.
April 2021 marks the official 20th anniversary of Sexual Assault Action Month. Efforts to promote this awareness campaign begin in 2001 when the national government officially deems the month of Sexual Assault Action Month in April. In the early 2000s, the primary goal of Sexual Assault Awareness Month was one of awareness. Bringing visibility of sexual assault dynamics and centering the experiences and voices of sexual assault survivors. By the mid 2000s, Sexual Assault Awareness Month incorporated sexual assault prevention initiatives more heavily. Focusing to address sexual violence within communities, workplaces, and college campuses. These campaigns encourage individuals and communities to engage in preventing sexual assault by changing behaviors and promoting healthy relationship skills.
Why does it matter? According to the National Sexual Violence Resource Center in the U.S., one in three women and one in six men have experienced some kind of sexual violence in their lifetime. In addition, the 2015 National Intimate Partner and Sexual Violence Survey found that approximately one in five women in the U.S. reported experiencing a completed or attempted rape at some point in their lifetime. We also honor and recognize the correlation between childhood sexual abuse and adult victimization. There is often a long-term impact of sexual violence and battery on the mental, physical, and financial health of victims. Particularly within marginalized or historically misrepresented and underrepresented communities. It is important that our community is empowered to speak out against these harmful actions and take tangible steps to stop sexual violence from happening in the first place.
Haven from domestic and sexual violence believes that promoting healthy relationships, providing space for the often difficult conversations around sexual violence, and encouraging survivors in their healing are all critical in ending sexual assault and ultimately creating safer communities for all people. We do this by providing training, education, outreach, and technical assistance for school staff, local partners, and the broader community. We also offer wellness programs and support groups for participants, provide emergency shelter and crisis intervention support through our 24/7 crisis line, and engage in systems-based advocacy and awareness campaigns related to this work, such as Sexual Assault Action Month.
For those community members who would like to work alongside us in this effort, we would like to offer a few tangible suggestions. Take the time to learn and educate others about the root causes of sexual violence. If someone you know does confide in you, show up as an ally. Listen to their story and ask them how they would like to move forward. Demonstrate your care and concern by asking questions and offering resources to support their experience versus challenging it. Believing in survivors and validating their story is crucial to their healing process of the survivors of any age. Finally, encourage your community to recognize and work together to raise awareness and take action to prevent sexual violence. You can do this by participating in workshops and trainings meant to increase skills around recognizing and responding to incidents of sexual violence or donating to causes that support survivors of violence.
We could not accomplish any of this without the support and encouragement we receive from our community. We believe that it is through the actions of many that we will see individuals' lives changed for the better. Ultimately, making the gorge a safer place for everyone. Therefore, we ask that you join us in observing April 2021 as Sexual Assault Action Month in the Dalles by signing the following proclamation into effect. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I will now read the proclamation. City of the Dalles Sexual Assault Action Month. Whereas sexual violence affects every person in the Columbia River Gorge. And whereas we believe survivors. And whereas now, more than ever, we are reminded that we are capable of change. And whereas every individual and community in North Central Oregon has a role to play in moving forward and promoting health and safety for all people by not tolerating violence, by promoting accountability, and by participating in the efforts to end violence and abuse. And whereas our efforts are built on the foundations of work by dedicated activists, advocates, preventionists, responders, and community leaders who have been advancing justice and equity for decades. And whereas by taking action where you work, play, learn, worship, and live, change is possible and sexual violence is preventable when we are all working to end all forms of violence and abuse. Now, therefore, I, Richard A. Mays, Mayor of the City of the Dalles, hereby proclaim April 2021 to be Sexual Assault Action Month in the Dalles and encourage all community members to join in this observance. Thank you, Cassie, and thank you, Lucy, for coming today and your comments. We appreciate it very much. Counselor Long Curtis?
Yes, I have a question for Haven. I didn't realize they were here when we were debating the resolution. So could one of you please explain what the phrase systemic oppression means in this resolution and why it was even included in the first place?
Yeah, so communities of color, women, and any group who is affected by systemic oppression is also disproportionately affected by sexual violence, stalking, and domestic violence. So when we say systemic oppression, we mean the ways in which our legislation on a local and national level disproportionately affects certain communities and causes damage in their lives.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you, Darcy.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
Yes, I have one. I accept and commit to supporting Sexual Assault Action Month personally.
Thank you, Counsel McLaughlin. Okay, with that, again, thank you very much for coming from Haven, Cassie and Lucy. And we'll now move on to item five B, I guess it would be, audience participation. I've already read what this is all about. I've also indicated that I'd like to call on Kenny LaPointe to address the city council on what's going on with the pallet shelters. Mr. LaPointe?
Thank you, Mayor Mays, and thank you, members of the council. I appreciate you having me here today. A little bit of background on me, pretty new to the community here, just started with community action in November. Just about 130 days on the job, but who's counting? I think you all know that Mid-Columbia Community Action Council took over the operation of the Dallas Pallet Shelter site earlier this year. And have been supporting the operations of that site from a staffing standpoint, as well as from a financial standpoint. I wanted to call your attention to, you have my written comments, obviously, but wanted to call your attention to some of the the outcomes that we've seen from the shelter residents. So one of the biggest ones for us is long-term housing stability. So we have had seven of the shelter residents who have been placed in permanent housing. We actually have a couple of them who are looking for permanent housing right now as they've been able to obtain a housing choice voucher through the Mid-Columbia Housing Authority. In addition, we have a number of folks who are working on post-secondary education, as well as folks who are working and living at the shelter site. I would say that, you know, many of the folks who have done work with the houseless population in the region know very well that many of the folks who have obtained stability through the shelter had really, really struggled previously to going into the shelter. And this provided them with that relief where they could focus on the other, the other things they needed to focus on. I think we can all imagine that living in homelessness can make it pretty difficult to take care of yourself from a physical and behavioral health standpoint, as well as, you know, looking for a job, obviously. So we're very excited that we've been able to run that shelter. We really appreciate the collaboration of the city. Anywhere from the council, from the mayor, to Julie Krueger, we just really appreciate the partnership on the shelter site. I think many of you know that the shelter is scheduled to close on March 31st. We were potentially hoping that we could, we could keep that thing open beyond March 31st, realizing that that the folks who are living in the shelter would have no place to go after that date. After kind of racking our brains and digging to try and find a way to keep the shelter sited, we kind of have our hands up in the air at this point in time, although we do have some options that exist in the future. Right now, House Bill 2006 is being worked by the Oregon Legislature. It is up for a floor vote this week, although I don't know what is going to happen with floor votes this week because there was a COVID outbreak in the Capitol and they canceled some of the floor sessions. But House Bill 2006 is a potential way that we could cite the shelter flexibly in the future. That bill, which is very well supported across the state, and there are other communities that are in very similar situations to the Dalles where they're waiting on House Bill 2006 to pass so they can extend their shelter operations. Very well-supported piece of legislation. I anticipate, based on my conversations with legislators and the governor's office, that that bill will pass at the end of April at the earliest here. So we could potentially come back and have another conversation about reciting the shelter. And Mid-Columbia Community Action would be happy to take the lead on operating the shelter. I do note in my comments here that we were just awarded on Friday a $3.1 million grant. It's a federal grant to address housing instability and homelessness across the region here. So very excited that we were able to get those resources into our community and we'll be doing a lot of work to address housing instability with those funds. With that, I kind of want to just wrap up my comments here, but happy to come back and talk further with the council about our work at the shelter and what we plan for the future with that $3.1 million grant. We do plan to staff up. Sorry, there's a lot of background noise. I'll go ahead and keep going. I can try and talk louder. So we will, if, with those resources, should we open the shelter back up, we will plan on increasing our staffing at the site. Right now, we have two staff working the shelter site. We would plan to have four working 24-hour shifts at the shelter, so we've had round-the-clock staffing right now. We do plan to place the folks who are medically fragile. We have about nine or 10 folks right now who are medically fragile and staying at the shelter. And it would not be safe for them to be out on the street, and so we are working to get them into a hotel or motel through a voucher program that we're able to offer. That is not a sustainable program. Paying for hotel motel rooms on an ongoing basis is incredibly expensive and definitely not the choice way to keep people housed and would run our budget out pretty fast. But I do, I would love to come back to the council and have another conversation about the future of the shelter site. And I would urge you to contact our local elected officials, state-elected officials, and urge them to support the passage of House Bill 2006. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
You're muted, Mayor Mays.
Mayor, I-
Sorry about that. I had asked for county, city councillors' comments or questions, and I just recognized Counsel Richardson.
Sorry, Mayor. That was a hand to the ear. I wasn't quick enough unmuting myself to tell you that you were muted.
Go ahead, Counsel. Oh, I'm sorry. You didn't want to, you didn't have a question then, okay. Any other city councilor have a question or comment? Okay, I see anybody in the audience have a question or comment. I see Karen Murray with her hand raised. Go ahead. Pertaining to this issue, of course, right?
Yes.
Go ahead, please.
I wear multiple hats. I'm wondering what the downside of extending the, so that people can stay at the shelter, the pallet shelter, for a couple more months. What's the downside of that? Because, like, every time I go there, it's very calm and people are getting taken care of and there's lots of resources and I would just fully support it being extended, but what, what does the city think is the downside of extending it? Or is that appropriate question?
No, it's very appropriate. The short answer is it's not a question of the downside. It's a question of legality and it's a question of violating our own ordinances. Our own ordinances do not allow it past the March 31st deadline. Kenny, can you, anything more you can add to that? That's a good question.
I mean, I, I think, yeah, great, great question and appreciate the support, Karen. And glad you've seen the shelter in operation and recognize that it's very valuable to the community and a safe and quiet place for the folks that are staying there. You know, I think what it comes down to here is we have a land use issue and that is something that House Bill 2006 will help to overcome. It'll allow us to flexibly cite the shelter. I think there's a lot of support that I've heard from the community for extending the operation of the shelter. We're kind of in a weird place here where we're not able to extend the operation. We have the funding to do it, so I actually think usually for me, that's the most difficult part is to obtain the funding. But we kind of have a funky land use system in our state and that is contributing to this.
And I think it's fair to say, and I'm only speaking for myself, that once House Bill 2006 passes, the city council will be taking up this issue very quickly. Okay, anybody, Mr. Nichols?
Yes, I'm wondering if the problem is the city ordinance or the state ordinance. It's the city ordinance. The city can change it.
Well, we're going through a very comprehensive amendment to our Land Use Development Code and we expect that it's going to take longer than it takes the state legislature to pass the law, so.
May I respectfully suggest that it doesn't take that much to make one change? You can change one ordinance in a simple thing overnight if you want to. It's your city. It's our city.
Thank you. Anybody, any staff member have a comment on that? Otherwise, we'll move on. I see our city attorney has his hand raised. Go ahead, Jonathan Kara.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So to address Mr. Nichols' point about, it is a very quick change. It can be. The issue is that whenever a change occurs in our land use and development order- Um, the issue is that whenever a change occurs in our land use and development ordinance, a number of different state timelines get triggered. And our ordinance revisions, while they are exclusively local and pertain only to the city of the Dalles and the city limits of the city of the Dalles at that, they do require state oversight and state approval because they affect land use, which, uh, I believe Kenny LaPointe said, it is a little funky in Oregon. Uh, and so the timelines are a little bit delayed. Um, it's not overnight by any means. The only way that we could do an overnight change is, is what we did in October, uh, with an emergency resolution, which took the issue out of land use. But this issue is squarely within land use and, uh, our, our hands aren't as tied as it, it once was, and we certainly are moving as quickly as we can. I don't anticipate this is going to take any longer in any other city in the state, uh, because these timelines are set by statute and they are set by the state. So hopefully that answered the question. Uh, just last week, we, we met to discuss updating our Ludo and this has been a topic for the council since the council's visioning meeting in January. Um, and so we, we're working pretty diligently on it to get it done as quickly as possible. Hopefully that answered, uh, Mr. Rogers' question.
So my understanding is zoning, my name's Allen Alfred.
Allen, um, please be, uh, way to be recognized. I saw a thumbs up by Mr. Nichols. I'm assuming his question got answered. Um, Mr. Nichols, could you give your address for the record, please?
It's 1617 Oregon Street. My apologies for not doing so sooner.
It's okay. Okay, Mr. Alfred, please, your name and address?
Yes, 515 and a half Liberty Street here in the Dow. So right now, my understanding was there was one area authorized for a shelter. There's no opportunity to temporarily relocate that?
No, um, our, our, our ordinance does not allow that. Is that correct, Mr. Kara?
That is correct. And the reason why is because, uh, certain uses, well, if a use is to exist in the city of the Dalles, it must be authorized by our code by name, uh, and shelter, temporary or permanent, uh, is not authorized in any of our code, in any sections. And so to update it, our land use code, we'll be adding shelter as an allowable use in certain zoning districts.
What is the Vincent DePaul Ministry Building zoned as? On Third and Pateline?
So you're referring to the, uh, the form, the, the kitchen that had, uh, the warming shelter that closed for this last year, right? That's a very special case. And in that case, that use was approved as an accessory use to what they had, uh, back when it was approved about 10 years ago. They used to have a kitchen there and it was approved by our planning department as an accessory use. Um, such use is now inconsistent with our code and a similar application for an accessory use to open a new shelter there would not be approved under our laws.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments? Counsel Richardson?
Thank you, Mayor Mays. So I understand the pallet shelter was opened under an emergency, uh, resolution, the emergency being that the traditional warming shelter was closed due to the pandemic. Okay, if that's, that's accurate, that's sort of minor contextual understanding. I have a question for Mr. LaPointe or, and/or perhaps, um, Darcy or whomever that, that could speak to this. I'm wondering if there's sort of markedly increased homeless population or a population experiencing housing instability during this past year that could be, um, feasibly tied to the pandemic's conditions? Have we seen more houseless people or people, uh, facing housing instability in the community?
Kenny, do you want to take it or you want me to answer based on what I've seen?
Um, why don't I start? Um, so I, I, you know, I'll admit, I have only been, um, in the region for a few months now. So, um, I did work for the state of Oregon prior to coming here and was the Public Affairs Director for the Housing and Community Services Agency, which funds homeless service programs across the state, including, um, our community. And, um, did a lot of travel across the state during that time, um, and had conversations with many communities about, um, the rise of homelessness. Oregon is one of the top states in the country when it comes to homelessness, in particular when it comes to rural homelessness. Um, I would say anecdotally, we have seen an increase in homelessness over the last year, um, and we've seen an increase in housing instability, although the eviction moratorium, which expires in June, has done some to protect folks, um, from losing their housing. And Mid Columbia Community Action, along with the Housing Authority, have paid a lot of back rent on behalf of folks who have not been able to work or have had some related COVID impact. So anecdotally, I would say, yes, we did not do an annual point in time count this year because of the pandemic and the risk that that posed for volunteers. So we were not able to get out there and do a count, um, which is heavily reliant on a volunteer, um, group of folks to come in and assist with counting the houseless population. So we do not have data that shows that there was an increase, um, related to unsheltered homelessness.
And so, uh, Counsel Richardson, so just, uh, obviously anecdotally, but I do, um, take intake forms where people complete and give me information about their situation, how long they've been homeless, and I get to know a lot of the residents down here. And there is actually, um, quite a number of them who had, were employed and housed before, and then a year ago, one of, one or both of them lost their job and then they lost their housing, not realizing that there was going to be assistance. So they, you know, did the right thing. They thought they weren't going to be able to pay their rent. They moved out and, um, they've been spending this whole time trying to get back on their feet and get back somewhere. Um, they have a housing voucher now, but there's nowhere to use it. And so I do see a lot of that and I see a lot of people who are not your traditional, uh, homeless. I see a lot of people who've been homeless only for a few months or even sometimes weeks, and they're basically just living out of their cars. And some of these people have never even camped or anything like that before. So it's really, it is very much different with COVID.
Counsel Richardson, is that, uh, answer your question?
It does. It looks like, Mr. Mayor, that, um, Mr. Alfred may have some comments that could shed additional light. I'd like to hear what he has to say before I have any follow-up.
Yes, as far as numbers, I was warming center liaison last year. And as I understand it, we are serving far more people at the pallet shelters than we had been in the warming shelter last season.
Thank you. I might add that in, in regards to a point in time study that, um, our committee that, that has met twice now, has, um, made contact with a group of volunteers from the old co- Housing Coalition. And we have a, uh, group of people ready and able to, uh, to, to, uh, offer their volunteer services for this issue. Okay, anybody else?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, may I follow up?
Yeah, go ahead, Counsel Richardson.
So the pallet shelter was opened, uh, under an emergency resolution, uh, as we were facing winter and that was the, that was the underlying emergency. I'm wondering if it would be legal or appropriate to consider the, uh, pandemic's effects on some of our, our, uh, local folks in terms of them losing jobs, becoming newly homeless, increasing or apparently increasing, uh, the local homeless popu- population? I'm wondering if it'd be legal or appropriate to consider that as a sort of emergency such that we might, um, consider continuance of the resolution or perhaps, um, uh, come up with a, a separate resolution to keep the temporary shelter temporarily open? Will we consider sort of the long-term future in citing and, and whether we want to have one either?
I thought that the, that was the original purpose of your question when I first recognized you. Um, the only person I could think of calling on to answer that would be, uh, Mr. Kara.
Sure, Mr. Mayor, no worries. To answer Counsel Richardson's question, there appears not to be a sufficient nexus between, uh, unsheltered homelessness and, and the COVID pandemic. And so when we talk about emergency resolutions authorizing the use, well, anything that skirts our local land use or any one of our local ordinances, there has to be a sufficient justification to allow us to get there. Uh, in the case of the shelters that we put up in October, um, that emergency was undeniable. It was the, uh, the cold weather coupled with the COVID pandemic, leading to sort of a perfect storm that would allow a sufficient justification under state law to, to justify avoiding our own local rules. And so this shouldn't be an issue going forward. Once we amend our Ludo, if the amendments are acceptable to the council, they'll be baked into the city code and every year going forward, until it's, until, if and until it gets changed in the future, um, we shouldn't have this issue. But in this meantime, um, absent, absent anything else other than, uh, COVID, it doesn't appear that COVID is a sufficient justification. Now, some jurisdictions may take that approach, but it's not well-founded in the law. Um, anything other than doing it the way that we're planning on doing it, which is amending our code to be consistent with our code, um, is a little adventurous and, and it's unsettled and the justification is very shaky. Uh, and so absent anything like cold weather justifying the shelters, it's not going to work out. But like, like, like everybody's been saying, um, soon this shouldn't be an issue. So hopefully that answered your question.
Thank you, Mr. Kara. Mr. Nichols?
Thank you. Quick question. I'm wondering if the medically fragile people that are currently there could be considered a justification?
Mr. Kara?
So relatively, the, the fragility or medical fragility of, of individuals doesn't seem to be sufficient to justify skirting our land use laws. Um, our land use code exists, it's been, and it's existed for many, for many years, um, outside of the world of, of knowing about or, or recognizing individual ideas or, or health concerns, right? So the code applies to land and that's really the ultimate issue. And so we have to, when we're talking about, uh, citing a shelter, we're talking about using land. Uh, and so there, there is no room in our Ludo for interpreting, um, the quality of life or anything like that. Uh, so to answer your question, a little coldly, but by the book of the law, uh, no, it doesn't matter.
Okay, so you were saying that property is more important than people?
Is that what I said?
Yeah.
That, no, that, come on, Mr. Nichols.
I, I apologize, but it seems such a simple thing to do and so vicious to not do it. Then I will say no more.
Thank you. I think you can tell by the quality of Mr. Kara's answers that he has given this issue a lot of thought, as well as the community development staff and the city manager. And my, um, my compliments to the staff for researching this in depth the way they have. I've asked several questions as well. Um, not tonight, but, uh, I certainly did the past few days. Counsel Long Curtis?
Yes, I just wanted to echo those same sentiments, Mr. Mayor, um, because I, obviously people know how much, uh, this issue means to me and, and how far I went, uh, to make it happen in the first place. And I just want to say that, um, our attorney, Jonathan Kara, as well as the city manager and other staff people have been nothing but helpful and have tried, um, everything that they could possibly do legally that, um, that would be, be good for the city. We've looked at all those things and I really trust their judgment. And unfortunately, this is just something we're going to have to do right now is wait for the legislature to pass 2006 or wait for us to change our land use. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, in closing, uh, I, uh, now that the staff has been, uh, com- uh, complimented, um, I did want to close by, um, Mr. LaPointe had suggested that he appreciated partnering with the city and the city staff and, and, um, I just want to say that Mr. LaPointe has been very easy to partner with. I think in the 130 days he has been here, he's been a breath of fresh air for the cause of, uh, homeless issues in the Dalles. And, um, he's been very dedicated and, and I've worked with him, um, a lot in the last 130 days and, um, I think he's been a joy to work with. And thank you very much, Kenny, for all your efforts.
Thanks for having me.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now, uh, let's get back to, uh, audience participation. Is there anyone else who would like to address the city council for up to five minutes about any issue that is not on the agenda? Last call. I don't see any hands and I don't hear any voices. Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to item six, city manager's report. Ms. Kruger?
Thank you, Mayor Mays. I do not have a verbal report tonight.
Thank you. City attorney report, Mr. Kara.
Thank you, Mayor Mays. Um, let's see. Okay, so, um, well, since our last meeting, I've been working closely with the airport, um, the airport manager specifically and the Dallasport Water District at coordinating some water right issues at the airport. Um, it's been a tremendous journey and we're almost at the end of it. And so I, I just thought I'd share that with the council to know that some, some good things are hopefully happening, uh, across the water over in Dallasport on our airport. And, uh, again, I, I know that Counsel Richardson went out there and had a tour. Uh, I highly encourage every member of the council to get more involved if, if they can find time. Um, and our airport's, you know, part of the city as well. And, uh, well, last week I met with our community development director, Alice Cannon. We went over some of our, uh, planned Ludo amendments consistent with, uh, the council's direction at the visioning meeting. And so we're trying to implement those as quickly as possible, um, by sticking to state timelines. And, uh, that's my report for tonight. More than happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Kara. Any questions? Okay, we'll move on to city council reports. The first person I see is Rod Runyon, Mr. Runyon.
Hmm. Find where I'm at. There I am. Okay, uh, just a couple of things. Uh, participated in Representative Bonham's redistricting, uh, meeting on Zoom and, uh, Friday I've been continuing with the League of Oregon Cities updates with the governor's staff on coronavirus and that's all.
Thank you. Counsel McLaughlin?
Give me one second. All right. Uh, last Friday, uh, March 22nd, there was a airport meeting at 7:00 AM. Uh, some of the things on that was, uh, a hanger lease that we're nearing the end of getting those completed and everyone in compliance and basically getting a, an accounting program set up. So I'm pleased to announce that that's moving, uh, forward. Um, letter, uh, was received by the FAA and, uh, thank you for Jonathan and all your work for getting that completed so we can get those water right agreements moving forward. And that's, uh, everything I have.
Thank you. Counselor Long Curtis?
I, I don't have anything to add as far as the warming shelter. I think Kenny LaPointe did a good job on that. Um, but I would, uh, let people know that the Urban Renewal Agency Board Meeting was postponed and it will be actually next Tuesday, which is March 30th at 5:30, if anyone is interested in attending that on Zoom.
Thank you. Counsel Randall?
There we go. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, community, community cleanup resumed on March 13th, Saturday, and, uh, there was a pretty large turnout. I'd say about 35 or more people. Uh, they gathered about three truckloads of trash along West 6th Street. Uh, Columbia Gores Toyota, Copper West Real Estate and the Dallas Beautification Committee co-sponsored and, uh, supported this effort. Um, as I said, the effort was, uh, focused mostly along West 6th Street. Uh, the south side of West 6th, uh, looks pretty good. I think most of the businesses maintain their, uh, their street fronts pretty well, but the north side is another story. There's, uh, quite a bit of, uh, trash and debris that accumulates along that route. Um, especially on the, uh, uh, the drainage ditch that runs along that road there. There's a lot of, uh, a lot of stuff gets blown into that ditch and it, uh, it's pretty problematic getting it out. So I think it's, uh, kind of a job for the, um, public works as far as getting in. There's some steep embankments and of course standing water in there. So most of the volunteers weren't, um, willing to go into that water to, to pull the trash out. But, but again, if, if the city could assist in that effort, um, that would be great. So that's all, that's all I have.
Thank you. Counsel Richardson?
Thank you. Just a couple of brief things, Mayor Mays. Uh, I've fielded a two or three constituent queries in the last week on, on, on various things. Attended Chief Ashmore's presentation or talk to the Chamber of Commerce's, uh, Government Affairs Program on Thursday last and a week ago or a week prior to that, I presented at the Government Affairs. And that's it for right now. Thank you.
Thank you. As far as my report, on March 10th, 9th and 10th, I gave, uh, presentations to the Lions Club and the Rotary Club about the Google, um, agreement, tentative agreement. On March 11th, I attended the governmental affairs meeting. March 16th, interview with KODL Al Nguyen on KODL Radio. March 19th, I met with, uh, members of the- On March 11th, I attended the governmental affairs meeting. March 16th, interview with KODL Al Nguyen on KODL Radio. March 19th, I met with members of the community outreach team with Senator Cantwell's staff. And I also had a meeting that day with Lynette Black of the Oregon State University Extension Service. And I also, on Saturday, attended yet another community cleanup. This one was at Sarosis Park and was led by local resident Curtis Eggers, who led the charge. And thanks to Curtis for his hard work and leadership in that. Okay, item nine is consent agenda. Items of a routine and non-controversial nature are placed on the consent agenda to allow the city council to spend its time and energy on the important items and issues. Any counselor may request an item be pulled from the consent agenda and be considered separately. Items pulled from the consent agenda will be placed on the agenda at the end of the action items section. There are three items, three items on the consent agenda tonight. First is the approval of the March 8th council minutes. Second is a resolution concurring with my appointments to the Budget Committee, Debbie Ferrera, who will be replacing someone who is on the Budget Committee that is moving out of the area, and also Mr. Ben Ring, who's replacing a Budget Committee member who just got elected to the city council. Mrs. Ferrera is with us tonight. And I'd like to introduce her. If she'd just waved to us and let her, let us know who she is, I'd appreciate it. There she is. Thank you. And item C is declare a Department of Community Development vehicle as surplus. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I will move to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
I will second that, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, it's been moved by Counsel McLaughlin, seconded by Counsel Richardson to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes unanimously. Thank you all very much. And thank you, Ms. Ferrera, for volunteering and for coming tonight. Oh, she's also going to be on the Urban Renewal Budget Committee, too. Okay, item 10 is public hearings, supplemental budget resolution 21-008. And I trust that would be our finance director, Ms. Angie Wilson. I believe you're muted.
Maybe turn up your volume.
How about turning up your volume?
Would you like to come upstairs? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Sorry. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of council. You have before you my agenda staff report for public hearing item number 10A. This is for our resolution 21-008, adopting a supplemental budget for fiscal year 2021, making appropriations and authorizing expenditures from and within the sewer special reserve fund of the City of the DOWS adopted budget. The city sewer special reserve fund has realized an additional $1,721,330 in connect charges and sewer STCs to be allocated to the sewer special reserve fund. And the Public Works Department would like to allocate those to the West Side Interceptor and the West Second Street Joint Utility Project. Does anyone have any questions regarding that?
Any questions for Ms. Wilson? Okay, is there a motion to approve the resolution?
Mr. Mayor?
The public hearing?
Yes, thank you, Counselor. I think you have to call for testimony because this is a hearing.
Okay, is there anyone who would like to testify either for or against this resolution to amend the budget? Anybody?
Hello?
Last call. Okay, with that, did you have anything else you wanted to add, Ms. Wilson?
No, it's because you guys can hear me.
We can hear you fine now. Okay, is there a motion to approve the resolution? Anybody?
Mr. Mayor, I will make a motion to approve the resolution.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved by Counsel Richardson and seconded by Counsel Long Curtis to approve the resolution. Is there any discussion? All those in... Counsel Randall, did you want to say anything? Nope, okay. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Wilson.
Thank you.
Okay, item 11A. Awarding a contract for the West Side Interceptor Sewer, Mr. Dale McCabe, our Public Works Department. I believe you're muted, Dale, or your, or your volume is not turned up. Okay, why don't we, why don't we move on to item 12A and come back to Mr. McCabe? Is that okay?
Our Public Works Director is here. Dave, are you connected well enough to speak?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, can you hear me? This is Dave Anderson, Public Works Director.
Yes, sir, we can hear you fine. Please go ahead.
Okay, I apologize. I'm going to be audio only tonight. The item before you is the award of the West Side Interceptor Upgrades Phase One Contract. The scope of work for this project is to construct about 1,300 feet of 30-inch sanitary pipe, and that includes about 165 feet that'll extend under I-84 in a 36-inch casing. This project is needed to meet expansion, expanding demands coming from the port, both from an expansion of existing industries and the anticipation of new ones. The project was developed in-house with our city engineers and put out to bid. We received six responses, six bids on the project. The low bid was from Crestline Construction in an amount of $1,531,025. We actually had a total of $1,170,000 budgeted for the project in the sewer special reserve fund, which is Fund 56, line code 7630. The lowest bid that we received was $361,025 over the budgeted amount. However, the supplemental budget that was just approved by the council will provide the additional funding for the project. And with that, it's staff's recommendation that the city council authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with Crestline Construction for the West Side Interceptor Upgrades Phase One, contract number 2020-010, in an amount not to exceed $1,531,025.
Okay, does anyone have any questions for Mr. Anderson? Okay, seeing no questions, would anybody like to make a motion?
Mayor Mays, I moved to authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with Crestline Construction for the West Side Interceptor Upgrades Phase One, contract number 2020-010, in the amount not to exceed $1,531,025.
Thank you, Counsel McLaughlin. Is there a second?
I second the motion.
It's been moved by Counsel McLaughlin and seconded by Counsel Randall to authorize the city manager enter into the contract with Crestline Construction. Is there any more discussion or questions? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye or raise your hand.
McLaughlin?
Aye.
Three, four, five. Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Anderson. Okay, item 12A. Hopefully we'll be able to hear Ms. Hurt, Ms. Cannon, on this one.
Mayor Mays and members of council, I want to introduce Dawn Hurt, senior planner, who is the project manager for this. And she has a short PowerPoint presentation. We look forward to your discussion tonight.
Thank you, with emphasis on the word discussion.
I just want to make sure you guys can hear me.
We can hear you fine.
Perfect. It's usually not a problem for me, but I'm going to share my screen now. Perfect. Okay. So thank you, Honorable Mayor and counselors. What we're doing tonight is, Alice and I are going to give you a little bit of an update in terms of what we've been working on the last few months, specifically regarding our, the DOWS Middle Housing Code project update. As you may remember, the Middle Housing Code project is based on a House Bill 2001 that was passed in the Oregon Legislature in 2019. What the plan is, is it expands housing opportunities for middle housing in most residential areas. And we, the DOWS, being a middle-sized city, or defined as a middle-sized city, was required to allow duplexes on any lot or parcel that allows detached, single-family dwellings. In terms of how we're funding this, the City of the DOWS received a grant from the DLCD that is providing the technical assistance. And we've hired Angelo Planning Group as our consultant to assist us through the project. The code amendments, we do have a stipulation, they must be adopted by June 30. So it's been quite a quick turnaround, but we're pulling through. Just to kind of give you a little bit of an idea in terms of our schedule, obviously, we started off approximately in September. Right now, we're, we're in March. We're just about to work, start in on our final code updates. Once that, we do have to do a change, a change to DLCD, letting them know that we're looking at making some code amendments. Then our process is legislative, which would be before both the Planning Commission and finally to city council for approval and code adoption. So I think, I believe I did mention that we were doing the public outreach online open house and survey that went along with this housing code amendment. We've had, we had some pretty good results from that meeting. And this is actually a graph that was prepared by Angelo Planning. Our survey was open for basically just a little over a month and a half. And according to Angelo Planning and all the jurisdictions that they work, they stated that the number of open house visits, as well as survey responses, were substantial for our size of community. They said they've seen even larger communities have far less responses. So over 600 open house visits and 171 survey responses. And what we wanted to show is pretty much what, what a lot of the people, they had comments and concerns about, you know, what they, what they, what type of housing do they want to see in the community? In terms of, you know, who did reply, most of the people were single-family homeowners. There was a significant support showing all of, all of these here are what we would consider middle housing and/or multi-type family units. The highest ranking objectives were affordable housing supply as well as homeownership opportunities. So we had a couple of points. We just thought we'd just bring you a couple of the things that will be coming to you with these potential code amendments in terms of our batches. So batch one, this was quite a discussion that we had in terms of specific means and terms, attached versus detached duplex units. When we're looking at our code amendments, the council, or excuse me, the Planning Commission was looking to find any type of way to allow for flexibility when it comes to the types of housing. So what we've provided here are a couple of different options that would be like a stacked duplex, something that we're all a little bit more familiar with, which is an attached duplex, side by side. And then there's also another opportunity or option that you can actually have a detached duplex, which would be two standalone units, sorry about that, two standalone units on the lot. So the commission was open to the modifications of the definition, and they preferred the flexibility. My guests, do you, do any of the council or mayor, do you have any questions on, on, on the discussion?
I have one. Counsel Runyon? Hello?
Hello?
Oh, okay. With your permission, Mr. Mayor? I'm looking at the, the three drawings there. Detached duplex, no adjoining wall. Isn't that just two small houses on a, on one lot? I don't understand how that works.
Right. So the way our code is written right now is that it's attached. They would have some structural components and it would be an attached unit. So what we're looking at is, you know, do we want to open this as a potential opportunity? One of the conversations that was brought up during the planning commission meetings was when it comes to financing and, you know, getting a lender to look at this, is there a difference between attached and detached when it comes to duplex? So I did reach out to Mr. Kilkeny, who graciously provided some information. And he said whether it's attached or detached, and it was, if it was on the same lot and it was two units, it would be considered a duplex. His only concern or comment in terms of finding additional properties that were similar when it comes to the appraisal time, so they have to do some comps. And, you know, obviously, right now, we don't have many detached duplexes because we just, we don't define our code, in our code that way. So it's just kind of, you know, taking a look at, is this something that we, our community, can, once, is detached also included?
So my follow-up is, and whether it's okay or not, that's great. But it, what it appears to be is I've taken one lot, cut it in half and put a tiny home on. It's kind of what it looks like, and that'd be a different set of circumstances.
Well, we do, so this is different than accessory dwelling units. So right now, our code does allow for a single-family home to have up to two accessory dwelling units. So that would be a little bit different than this. So this would actually be two, two full residential, I mean, it wouldn't be limited in size. And, and/or we would require separate units or separate utilities where accessory dwelling units are like mother-in-law quarters sometimes, where we do have some shared utility allowances there.
I wasn't thinking of accessory units. I understand that. It just, it looked more like what Hood River has done with some half-size lots and then a tiny, tiny home provision in their land use.
Yeah, and it does kind of appear that way. We are, Counsel Runyon, we are in the midst of, right now, on batch three, and we're starting to talk about tiny houses and some of those alternative housing types. So that's, that is coming, coming soon.
In response to that, Counsel Runyon, I would just say that this particular question really isn't about the size of that second unit. It's more about should, should we allow for detached duplexes as opposed to how we define them today, attached? Because the only thing that would limit the size of any structure, whether they were attached or detached, would be the setbacks at this point and any requirements we have in our code today regarding the distance between buildings. So, so it doesn't have to be tiny in that regard.
Yeah, I was just bringing up the, what I've been hearing in the concept of it's very different than what we've ever looked at before. That's all. I just want to put that on the table, and not that I'm against it or anything like that, but it is a question that comes up.
And I would agree completely. Yes, absolutely. Issue two for batch one was minimum lot sizes for single-family and duplexes. And as I stated earlier, the code or the House Bill required that any lot that we allow a single-family residence on, we had to allow a duplex. So the last round of amendments that we brought before planning, or planning commission and city council ultimately, we dropped our lot sizes down substantially. And what we as staff reviewed and have found, you know, obviously, we haven't had anybody taking advantage of it, but we, we found that it was a little bit difficult to think about a duplex being on a 2,000-square-foot lot. So in, in the event of residential medium density, we suggested that we look to upsize the minimum lot size from 2,000 to 4,000 square feet, which would then, you know, be a little bit more reasonable and allow for a larger footprint for a residential unit. When it comes to high density, we actually had the lots dropped down from the last amendments down to 1,500 square feet. So again, taking a look at putting two residential structures on a 1,500-square-foot lot, meeting setbacks, meeting parking requirements, it just... on a 1,500-square-foot lot, meeting setbacks, meeting parking requirements, it just, it just didn't seem to, to fit. And maybe kind of going back to Councilor Runyon's comment, and, you know, it's something drastically different than what we're used to right now. Definitely far more urban. But in our discussions, we, the original plan that had come through, we're into Angelo Planning, had suggested us bumping that up to 3,000 and basically doubling it. Staff's discussion and Planning Commission and Advisory Committee talked about, most of the lots are, a large majority of lots that are located in the high-density zone are 50 by 100 lots, which were originally created, you know, or turn of the century to the mid-40s, 50s. So a lot of those lots are 5,000 square feet. So what we had done is suggested that we make the modification to bump it up to 2,500 square feet, which then would allow for an even, you know, partition or develop, you know, to actually partition that 5,000-square-foot lot into two, which then could allow for one or two single-family dwellings on, on those parcels. Right. Batch two, and this is, this is an issue that, that comes up, and it keeps coming up, is parking. And, and we found that, in terms of discussion regarding parking, that we, we are pretty protective of, but obviously want to take a look at, at some different options to provide some flexibility and reduce some, some parking requirements. So the state required parking for duplexes has to be the same as we require for single-family. So right now, the way that we take a look at a single-family home is you're required to have two spaces. So with a duplex, you'd be required to have only two spaces, which would basically be one per unit. So what we had suggested is taking a look at our triplexes and quadplexes, and maybe taking a look at some consistency in our code, so that, you know, do we want to take a look at doing one per unit, or do we want to, you know, just make some modifications so that we have some consistency? So this one was a, a little bit, it was actually pretty split when it came into what was most appropriate for an amendment. Most of our Advisory Committee and Commission had suggested or looked at desiring, you know, desiring something, some sort of modification to what we're requiring right now. But, but we did have, we did have, it was quite a split. It was, it was an interesting conversation. So our current standard for triplexes is three, is six spaces, which is two per unit, and then quadplex is the same, two per unit at eight. So we took a look at dropping down the parking spaces for option one and option three, but option two is basically two spaces per unit. So, do you guys have any questions on that? Or Alice, do you want to add anything on that?
Yes, I, I do, because this is one of those times when the Planning Commission, we've talked about it so many times, it's crazy. And the Planning Commission hasn't reached any consensus yet. So this is one of those areas where we may, we may need to hear from the council what your preferences are. Maybe you don't know enough yet tonight to weigh in. But one of the, just, I want to add a, another element to this. We have three members of our, that sit with the Planning Commission, our citizens advisors, and those are Nate Stice, we have Joel Madsen, and Hanlon, Mary Hanlon. And all of those, though all three have specialty in housing and offer some good perspectives. And those three members have felt like anything above one, one space per unit is really not a very good, efficient use of land, and it, it serves as a disincentive to the types of housing opportunities that we might want to create here in the Dallas. So there, it created a really rich discussion. There were a couple of consistent members of our Planning Commission that felt we ought to stick with the current standards, two spaces per unit for triplexes and quadplexes. And then there was, were quite a few who felt one space, and then there were a couple that felt 1.5 spaces per unit. What I'll say is that, just based on my experience in quite a few different communities now, two spaces per unit is a pretty high parking ratio, but one space or 1.5 is what I've experienced in my career in different communities. So I'll just throw that out there. But we may need your guidance on this one, council.
As a follow-up, Ms. Cannon, with that experience that you've had, have you experienced any problems with 1.5 or 1.0 in retrospect?
Mayor, good question. I think we have experienced, I've experienced some impacts and some complaints from constituents with the one space per unit in some locations, particularly in areas where there isn't a very good supply of on-street parking. And then 1.5 tends to be sort of that, that just right amount. It tends to be about right, and tends to get a little bit, tends to get fewer complaints, just some, based on my experience.
Thank you.
And I, and I do think that, you know, with our link bus and, and some of those fixed routes that we currently have, that, that could help assist in, you know, obviously the need for parking to be reduced in time. I, you know, just, we're, we're not completely where we should be in terms of having a, a transit operating throughout the, the day. Next steps. So our next steps, we will be taking our revised batch three code updates, as well as working on some graphics. So I don't know how many of you have actually looked through our code very often, and we definitely have some rudimentary drawings, and, you know, like measuring heights, graphics that, that are in need of some, some definite help. So we're glad to see some of the great drawings that have been provided by Cascadia. We'll be looking at the combined code updates, which will be drafting all of the new code language, which will be batches one through three. And then we'll have our final Advisory Committee meeting before the Planning Commission, that'll be at the end of, or, yeah, towards the end of April. And then again, that'll start our process through the revisions, legislative hearing process, as well as bringing it to council and, and getting any changes or amendments adopted in May, and obviously implemented by June.
I have a question.
Council Runyon.
And I'm sure I'm the only one that thinks of this, but explain to me, one and a half parking places at a house. Is somebody in the street halfway and half in the driveway?
Go ahead, Alice.
Oh, actually, Dawn probably knows the specifics of our code, but in, in all codes I've been part of, is you, you round it up or you round it down? And I don't know what our code says. It might say round it up. Is that correct?
That is correct. So our code is rounded up. So obviously, when you start adding additional units, you'll, you'll benefit for, you know, a half space, but it is a round up.
So you take the total number, and if it ends up with five and a half spaces, for instance, then you would round it up to six that need to be provided?
So not necessarily talking about a unit, we're talking about the average of, of units.
Correct.
Of all units. And I, and I just was pretty sure that there are some people who don't understand that we're taking the average. Okay, that was all. Thank you.
Thanks.
Mayor and council, I, I'm trying to look to see if they're on, if, we have a couple of our accounts, our Planning Commission members who are going to be on this meeting tonight, and I'm looking to see if they're on. I don't know if they are, but they are available, I believe. Will you check, Dawn? They might be available to answer any questions that you might have tonight, if you have any of the Planning Commission.
Don't, I don't see. I'm not seeing anybody.
Any members of the City Council have any other questions? I know I have one, but I'll, I'll...
I, I have one comment in, looking at some houses that have converted their single-car garage into a family room, and now just have their single-car driveway. This will help them to be more in compliance, because they were obviously not in compliance on their full-size home when they did that.
And, and it would. And what we've seen and what we've noticed in, in the years that I've been here is there, there have been, and there are on occasion, some modifications that don't come through the proper channels and get a planning approval. We try to fix, fix and/or work with applicants, but usually what you'll see is when they enclose a garage, especially an attached garage, is that, you know, it turns into a living area or bedroom, but the parking's still not taken care of. So that's usually, it seems to be a hindrance in terms of any type of adding units and/or expanding, you know, residential uses within an existing building.
Thank you.
Any other members of the council have a question or a comment?
You might, you might.
To all the council.
Okay, Ms. Murray, I see your hand, and I'll call on you as soon as we're done with the council, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. I can't be sure of this, but your memo alludes to what was discussed and acted on by the City Council in October of 2019. And I believe at that time, I asked the question that how much of what we were adopting was directly attributed to state law? And I believe the answer I got at that time was virtually all of it, was, was because of state laws that had been passed. What is the answer to that same question, as far as what you've brought up today, tonight, as far as these code amendments? How much of the, this is due to state law?
Alice, do you want to jump, you want to jump on that one?
Um, I was going to hand it off to you, Dawn.
Okay, right. Okay. So in terms of densities, as well, anything to deal with duplexes, we have those regulations that we are supposed to follow. In, in, in addition to the Housing Code Amendments, we, we actually took a look at some modifications that we were, we've had problems with to provide some consistency. So we tried to kind of show it in our staff report that, you know, the House Bill requires a certain, you know, this is what the House Bill requires, this is what we're looking to do. So I would, I would say a majority of what you're seeing here tonight, other than the parking, so parking is not the only thing I'd be dealing with, would be the duplexes. So parking would just be us looking to, to make some potential modifications to allow for some, you know, consistency within our code. In terms of lot sizes, again, we just have to make sure for single-family duplexes that those match. We just took a look at, was this, you know, what, what makes most sense in terms of a lot size to allow for a development, meeting our setbacks, et cetera? So the state's not telling us it has to be a certain size. We're just trying to go within those guidelines that were given and be reasonable so that development would make sense.
So the, the interesting part of this project is that, I would say, 75% of the code amendments were, that are part of this package are required. However, the state law gives us choices, or the model code that's been developed by the Department of Land Conservation gives us choices. So we're probably able to make 50% of the choices that are in this code, but 75% of everything that's in this package is required. So some of the things we have choices on, for instance, are, the big one that we just mentioned is, we have the choice of whether we want to define duplexes as attached only, as they're currently defined, or whether we want to allow detached structures. You've probably heard of the housing type, and I think that these code amendments were adopted in 2019. It was the allowance for what's called cottage cluster housing. So on a, on a lot or a group of lots, you might be able to have small units clustered around, that are detached, all clustered around one another, around a common open space area. That's cottage cluster housing. So two detached duplexes would be a smaller version of cottage clusters. So, or in my case, it would be a way for my mother-in-law to not have to live with me in a, in an attached ADU. She could live detached and not have to hear me, you know. So, so anyway, it's just one of those things that, that gives some flexibility. But we also have to keep in mind, one thing that I want to make sure we protect is the quality of life and the character of our existing neighborhoods, so that whatever we decide doesn't get out of character with our, with, with what's already there.
All right, thank you. Councilor Long-Curtis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So something Dawn just said made me think of this. So how are, with the changes that are being proposed here, or at least being discussed here, how would those affect the legacy development on the east side?
So the, in terms of affecting, I think, I think the lot sizes are, are fine. So that basically what could happen, i- if Legacy is wanting to develop those as single-family homes, what we would have to allow is, each one of those lots could technically be a duplex. So our code, this, these amendments that we've, we already have it in our code that allows for that. But I believe their lots are, and Alice, do you recall, I wish this one, I wish Josh was here, I'm sorry, Dell, I don't know if you would know, but I think their lots are at least the 4,000 square feet on each parcel. So as long as they are, then, then they could have up to two units. I think everything was, I think it was consistent. I don't think there were any problems, but, but it could potentially double the size of, of units there i- if desired.
Okay, so they weren't using the, the new, they weren't using the smaller minimums on their proposal, I guess is kind of what I was thinking. Or, if for that matter, they grandfathered in because they already proposed something? I don't know how that works.
So our, so our current code, so when we adopt it and file the plat, so when the infrastructure goes in, so it would be based upon the, the minimum lot size for that time. And I can, I can actually look that up and let you know for sure on what the minimum lot sizes are, if that's something you want me to share with council, just, just so that you're aware. I don't, I want to say Josh had actually made a comment that some of our amendments were, were still in line with the legacy development, but I can verify that for you and provide it, it'd be a pretty good piece of information.
I appreciate that, and I think there's going to be a lot of public interest in that as well.
Great.
I thought that Legacy was actually, could have proposed more, more, based on the number of lots per, or, yeah, the number of lots per acre, but...
Absolutely, yes. So they, they were, yeah, they were more on the lower end of that. You are correct, Mayor Mays.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions by the City Council or comments? Okay, Ms. Murray, did you have a question or a comment?
I did. I just have a question. We have a couple neighbors around where we live, which is below Legacy. We believe they're high-density, zoned high-density, and they have had these lots next to them for some 25 years, some five years, approximately. So the question is, can they still build a single-family home on their lot that adjoins their property, or do they have to go multi-family housing? There just is a lot of confusion with that. And I'm going to have my husband just see if I, if I've explained it well enough.
So I, I think, Karen, I think I understand your question. So to, to answer your question, our code currently has what we call a minimum density requirement. So if someone owns, let's say, a quarter-acre parcel located in the high-density zone, they would have to build more than one single-family home. So there would be opportunities for them to either partition, whether it be a minor partition, and/or do something like my director, Alice Cannon, just stated about cottage clusters. So if that parcel's density, minimum density is more than one unit, then, then they would not be able to build just a single-family home.
Dawn, what if they had this lot for 25 years, and high-density came in and they didn't know about it, and now they just want to do what they had proposed to do, sell it to their son for a single-family home? The City of the Dallas is going to require, I've got to get my blood pressure down here. I just, it doesn't, I'm sorry, it doesn't make sense. And then there's another one where they bought the lot, the people were polluting our neighborhood, okay? They were burning their garbage. So they bought the lot and, and convinced them to move, and they moved, and so now they have the lot, and they want to build a single-family home on the lot, and it adjoins their property. You're saying they can't build a single-family home on the lot they've owned? Is that what the City of the Dallas is saying? Because I've told them, I said, that can't be right. It just can't be right. It's not fair. It's like they've owned it for a long time, and they bought it under the auspices of being able to develop their land? Help me, because it just...
Ms. Murray, I think, not to stifle the discussion, but perhaps your neighbor should call Ms. Hurt after the meeting sometime and have a one-on-one discussion with the community development staff.
But can you generally answer it? Because it doesn't make sense if that, if they can't develop their lot for a single-family home, and they've owned it prior to any sneaky high-density developer zoning, whatever, it just doesn't, it doesn't compute. I'm sorry. It just really infuriates me.
I think, I think it'd be best served to have your neighbor call the community.
I think they have, but I'm not sure they've talked to the right person. So I'll ask them to talk to Dawn, but if the answer is they can't build a single-family home...
Right.
I really think that the city needs to re- I really think that the city needs to reevaluate that because they shouldn't be forced to build a multi-family dwelling on their lot.
Ms. Cannon had her hand up. Did you want to say something, Ms. Cannon?
Yes, I do. And, um, like the mayor said, talking about specifics would be better offline, um, separately one-on-one and happy to do that. But what I will say, the, the zone, there are three residential zones. The zone that allows for single-family homes to be built on any lot is the low-density zone. So that one allows that. Any size lot, you can build a single-family home. Um, residential, medium, medium-density residential and high-density residential do have a minimum density requirement. So if there's a larger lot, in those cases, you have to, you, you would have to divide the lot into no more than 4,000 square feet to build a single house. So it gives people an opportunity to divide larger lots. They can still build a single-family house, but they have to divide their property to do that. And so it would just make for more opportunity for some of those houses, um, in a higher-density zone, more, more development opportunity. Uh, but you can't, in a, in a high-density zone, you just can't just plop a house in the middle of a lot because the intention is to be at a higher density. We've had a minimum density requirement in our code since 2011. So that's just, it's just information for, um, but there's only one zone in residential that allows single-family houses on any lot size.
What if it's replacing a single-family house that was built on a large lot?
Ms. Murray, could you identify yourself and give your address?
I'm Steve Murray. I live in the Dallas, 2645 East 11th Street. But if there's an existing house on a larger lot, you can't replace that house with a, with a newer one? Yeah.
Mr. Mr. Murray, again, I think we're talking about, you're not personally, um, affected by this. It's your neighbor, and I would suggest that your neighbor call the community development staff and, and to get answers because a lot of this is based on hearsay, with all due respect. And, um, I, I would suggest that your neighbor call either Ms. Hurt or Ms. Cannon and, and get that situation resolved, okay?
All right.
Thank you. Mr. Schwartz, Dr. Sw- Dr. Schwartz.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you hear me okay? I assume.
Please give your address, please, for the record.
Yeah, PK Schwartz, S W A R T Z. It's 711 East Scenic. I'm a little bit more concerned about the timeframe here of if the report and the action is going to go to the city council for some time in, in May or June or who knows when, and we're still waiting on the state to pass their new stuff. I just want to make sure this does not significantly delay any decision about the action for the homeless and the shelter replacement. Uh, so I just would like to really push the timeframe.
So Dr. Schwartz, to answer your question, these housing code amendments do not specifically deal with the transient and/or, um, uh, oh my gosh, transitional housing type use. So that'll be a separate process that, uh, Ms. Cannon and Mr. Karen, I will be working on to get those moving forward, uh, and, and so completely separate.
I mean, thank you.
You bet.
Thank you for your question. Okay, anybody else? Okay, uh, last call for any council discussion or questions? Okay, thank you. That wraps up item 12. And now, city council will be going into executive session. The city council will now meet in executive session in accordance with ORS 192 dot 662H to consult with council concerning the legal rights and duties of a public body with regard to current litigation or litigation likely to be filed. Representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session concerning pending litigation. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the discussions or deliberations during the executive session, excuse me, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision may be made in the executive session. At the end of the executive session, we will return to open session and welcome the audience back into the room. Yeah, I'm going to finish right here. Council Runyon's having issues again. Um, if he isn't here in about 30 seconds, he's giving me permission to go ahead and adjourn the meeting without him, since all we're doing is adjourning the meeting. So we'll wait about another 30 seconds or so.
How was 30 seconds, 15 seconds ago? So we only have five seconds now.
Yeah, but by talking, you've just prolonged it by 10 seconds it took you to say that.
Mr. Mayor, we have a quorum. I move that we adjourn the meeting.
I agree with that. Second.
Well, I hate to tell you guys, it's really up to me. You can make all the motions you want. So for your insolence, no, okay, meeting adjourned. Thank you all very much.
Stay.
Have a good night.
Thank you, everybody.